Good evening. We have a quorum. So we're going to start off with our Pledge of Allegiance. If our board member, senior board member, excuse me, Mr. Abanese or Hale will please lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
We stand in the flag of the United States of America and the free republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We're happy to see you today, Mr. Abanese. Next, we're going to have the adoption of the agenda. So I would like to see a motion to either adopt or amend the agenda as listed.
Motion to approve the agenda as listed.
Second.
All right. The adoption of the agenda has been first and seconded. Do we have any discussions? Seeing none. All in approval of the adoption of our agenda, please raise your hand. That is unanimous. Thank you so much. That brings us to the awards and, oh, yes. That brings us to the awards and recognitions portion of our board meeting. And so for that, I will hand it over to Director Battle.
Thank you, Chair Elrod. Good evening, board members. Tonight, we're going to celebrate some exceptional MNPS student athletes for their achievements in swimming and basketball. But first, we'd like to remember and honor an extremely dedicated and beloved educator whom we lost much too soon. Debbie Booker was the principal of the academy at Old Cockrell. She passed away about a month ago. Debbie was a wonderful teacher, administrator, and colleague, and we already miss her dearly. Debbie's family and friends are here with us this evening. And I'd like to read a resolution that we prepared in her memory. Resolution of respect for Debbie Booker. Whereas Debbie Booker was a talented, effective, and influential educator of thousands of students in Metro Nashville Public Schools over the course of her 18 years with the district. Whereas Debbie started with MNPS as a math teacher at McGavick High School for three years, and then served as an assistant principal at Antioch High School for four years, playing important roles at two of Nashville's largest high schools. Whereas Debbie then became a principal at some of the district's smaller schools, Cone School, Cone Learning Center, and the academy at Old Cockrell. Whereas in those roles, Debbie helped many of Nashville's non-traditional students complete their studies, earn their diplomas, and go on to find success in college and career opportunities, always making sure they heard her catchphrase, "I love you, and there's nothing you can do about it." Whereas Debbie always did things the right way to benefit the students of Nashville and Davidson County. And we will always be grateful for everything she did to help give them a brighter future. Whereas Simon Youth Foundation will present a plaque in Debbie's honor to the academy at Old Cockrell this spring. And whereas the academy at Old Cockrell will give an award each year to the student who most embodies Debbie's many wonderful qualities, which will be another fitting tribute to Debbie and the work she did. Therefore, be it resolved that we loved, respected, and admired Debbie and will miss her dearly in Metro Nashville Public Schools. And we hope the love that so many colleagues have shown for Debbie can be a comfort to our church family as we celebrate the life she lived and the impact she has, as well as comfort for her family and friends. We're working with the academy at Old Cockrell and Simon Youth Foundation to set a date for a spring dedication ceremony for the special plaque that is being made in Debbie's honor. And we look forward to announcing that date soon. To Debbie's family, her husband, who is here, and friends, thank you for sharing Debbie with us all these years. Again, she made quite an impact on our schools and our students. And I hope you can take some comfort in that during this difficult time. If you'll please join us up front, we'd like to present you with this framed resolution to take with you and to also take a picture with you this evening. Please welcome Debbie's husband and family and friends to the podium. Thank you again to Debbie's family and friends for being here tonight. And let us all keep Debbie in our thoughts as we celebrate her life and legacy. Next, we have a student athlete who accomplished something extremely impressive at the state swimming championships a few weeks ago. Spencer Nichols, a junior who swims from Martin Luther King Junior Academic Magnet High School, won the state championship in not one, but two events, the 100 butterfly and the 100 backstroke. Spencer swam the 100 butterfly in 46.74 seconds and the 100 backstroke in 48.20 seconds, which is a new middle Tennessee record. So here's what you need to know. There's two different strokes in which Spencer is the best in the state in 2023. And he is not anywhere close to being finished with swimming. Spencer will continue to compete for MLK as a senior next year. And he has already verbally committed to continue his academic and athletic career at the University of Virginia in 2024. Spencer, congratulations on these amazing accomplishments. And congratulations as well to your family and to your coaches. Please come on up here for a quick photo. And let's give them another round of applause.
I went to Virginia, too.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Make sure you can see him though.
Make sure you show both of them.
Spread them out.
You've got to do the Weenie Box pose.
All right, continuing with athletics, we now want to honor another state champion, the East Nashville Magnet Middle Schools Boys Basketball Team. Don't be shy. Y'all better get used to this. The current school year is the first in which MNPS middle schools have been able to compete at the state level through the TMSAA, the Tennessee Middle School Athletics Association. Previously, our middle schools could only compete for city championships. And the East Middle Boys Basketball Team did not waste any time taking advantage of this new opportunity. On February 11th, the Eagles soared to the state Class A championship by defeating John P. Freeman Middle School by a score of 47 to 29. This was an incredible accomplishment for a team competing at the state level for the first time. The Eagles displayed great determination, skill, and teamwork to get the job done. To all the Eagles players, Coach Matthew Gunther, and the other coaches, the parents of the players, as well as Principal Bruce Jackson, and everyone else who played a part, congratulations, state champions. And please, y'all, come on up for a photo to celebrate.
Oh, my gosh, you guys look so handsome.
I know.
Should I do my song?
No.
Oh, I know. Yeah.
Such a mama.
Congratulations again, East Magnet Middle. Now, board members, we will have to reschedule our recognition of Kendall Stowers from Otter B. Wells Elementary School, who couldn't be here with us tonight. And I'm very, very much looking forward to that, hearing from that young scholar. Again, we're so proud of Spencer Nichols and the East Middle Schools Boys Basketball Team. And we're grateful for everything Debbie Booker brought to our schools and our lives. Chair Elrod, with that, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you. I think we're going to get used to seeing, I feel like we're getting very used to seeing East Nashville Middle here. Congratulations, Ms. Nichols. All right, that brings us to public participation. So we're now going to hear from our MNPS stakeholders. Nope. Maybe I'll lean over to the side. Nope. We're going to just hope that you forgive me for the feedback and hope it doesn't get too disruptive. We're going to now hear from MNPS stakeholders that have signed up to speak to the board during this evening's public participation. There is a list on the screen. I asked that if you signed up, if you'll look up here to kind of make sure you know what number you're going in, what order. And your name is up there along with your agenda topic that you signed up under. So we'll start off with number one, Nancy Holland, speaking about integrated systems, which is up on our consent agenda.
Good afternoon. I was supposed to hold my sign up, but not too high. The problem is I'm vertically challenged. So if I held it the right place, you're not going to see it. And I apologize for that. I'm Dr. Nancy Holland. I am an MNPS retiree. I've retired twice, actually. I'm currently a day-to-day sub. And if you count my regular teaching years and my sub-years, this is my 29th year with MNPS. I'm here to speak on the Integrated Systems Contract that is on the consent agenda. The contract is a $1 million investment in school safety. However, none of this money is putting, is putting to addressing one of the most significant safety issues, the lack of adults in the buildings. Often, students have to be split so that there are 40 students in the same classroom. That definitely is a safety issue. As a substitute, I can tell you, I have frequently had children come into the class where I was subbing, and it's okay. The problem is, I don't always know where these children came from and if they're really supposed to be in there or not. And that's definitely a safety issue. We need to increase the daily sub-pay rate so that we can bring more subs into the building. The current rate hasn't been increased in over 10 years, yet inflation has risen dramatically. Nashville has a plethora of gig jobs where you can easily make twice the rate of substitute pay with companies such as Uber, Uber Eats, Lyft, DoorDash, Instacart, et cetera. Williamson County, Sumner County, and Montgomery County pay higher sub rates than MNPS. Dr. Battle's plan of having a school-based sub at every school is great, but not every school has filled that position. And as a sub, I take day-to-day jobs. A lot of my jobs are with music classes, which is what I started out teaching. And I've been reluctant to give up my day-to-day jobs because I want those music jobs when they come open. School-based subs are being used to fill teacher and sub-job vacancies. Therefore, they are not able to be used as a sub. Purchasing an integrated system contract does not address any other issues that have contributed to safety problems. In addition to the lack of adults in the building, there is a lack of expectation for student behavior. There doesn't seem to be an understanding of how students are expected to act with a sub. I have frequently gotten a comment that I didn't have to do it because I was a sub. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nancy. It's good to see you. I also forgot to mention that we have the three-minute limit, as per usual. So I appreciate that. All right, next, we have number two, also speaking about Systems Integrations Incorporated instead of Integrated Systems. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Hallie Trager, and I am a resident of the 6th District and an engineering and bio-stem teacher at Antioch High School. Tonight, I am here to address the proposed contract with Systems Integration Incorporated, which I hope that you will pull from the consent agenda for thorough discussion and debate and broader measures to keep students, teachers, and staff safe at school. The Systems Integration Incorporated contract would spend over $1 million on visual gun detection, subscription, and monitoring services. First, I would like to speak on this as a technology teacher. When I teach computer science students about the code involved in image recognition technology, I teach them to critically consider its limitations. Image recognition is a quickly developing field, but one still significantly constrained by the underlying power of both the surveillance cameras involved and the data used to train the software. I have seen stills taken from my school's surveillance cameras, and their resolution is limited. Surveillance cameras also, very appropriately, cover only limited regions of each school. The chance that a gun would happen to be brought out in a region covered by a camera at an angle a camera can see but also not be seen by a person in the region seems extremely small and more a reflection of understaffing than the technology. Not only could any effort to conceal the gun likely thwart the system, but image recognition technology is notoriously plagued by problems with false positives. False alerts can easily turn everyday situations, for example, a student holding a cell phone or a school device or another mundane object, into highly volatile ones when law enforcement responds to an automatically triggered false alarm of a weapon in a crowded hallway. Surveillance tech companies also often do not share the underlying data to prove accuracy and false positive rates, making it impossible to independently verify their claims. If you have been assured by Systems Integration Incorporated that their technology is, quote, "safe" or "highly accurate," I hope that you will demand independent analysis before voting on the contract. Rather than spending on this potentially risky technology, I urge you to instead invest that $1 million in measures that can help to ensure that our students are appropriately supervised and supported by people throughout their whole school day and in every single school. One concrete step toward this goal, and a step that I believe would be a better use of the funds proposed for this contract, would be raising the hourly pay for substitute teachers to an appropriate and competitive wage. Currently, teachers, administrators, and support staff are pulled away from our posts to cover classes because we cannot get adequate substitutes at the current MNPS pay rate. In addition to hindering our ability to provide quality instruction, this diversion can mean less adult supervision throughout our buildings. This is not a problem that can be automated away by throwing money at unproven image recognition technologies. This is a problem that should instead be addressed by investing in raising substitute teacher pay to a level that respects the skill, professionalism, and absolute necessity of both long-term and day-to-day guest teachers. Surveillance is not safety, and enhanced cameras cannot substitute for the relationships that make adequately-staffed schools thrive as safe and supportive communities. I hope that you will pull the Systems Integration Incorporated contract from the consent agenda and engage in a thoughtful discussion of whether this technology is truly the best use of funds toward the goal of making every student in every school both safe and known. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Number three, we have Beverly to speak to us about our educators that are eligible for tenure.
Good evening, MNPS family. I'm Dr. Beverly Wayland, and I live in Miss Bugs District. Tonight, the board is discussing tenure. Let's remember why tenure is important. It provides due process for educators in the face of possible discrimination and unfair practices. It is one way that school systems acknowledge that educators are professionals. Students learn better if their teachers are not worried about being rehired after working diligently for a district. Another way to acknowledge the professionalism of educators is for this district to institute longevity pay. Teachers are constantly fighting the pay penalty. It was at a record high in 2021, according to the Economic Policy Institute. Our college-educated friends and other jobs make substantially more money. Obviously, teachers are here because we love children. But that is not an excuse to make them live from paycheck to paycheck in America's it city. I asked my colleagues for their insights. Those I spoke to have been working for more than 20 years in the district, some of them more than 30. Here's what they said. One, a teacher with more than 30 years' experience told me she is frustrated because her take-home pay is less each year due to increasing insurance premiums and the cost of living in Nashville. Two, our step increases were great last year. Thank you, but it's not enough. Our salaries were frozen for years. Now there are signing bonuses for new hires. My friends have joked about resigning and then reapplying to get the bonus. Other friends have been joking, not joking, excuse me, when they say they are quitting and moving to a different county because they can be a school psychologist with only one school and pay a lot less money in rent. Three, another 30-year educator told me that she sees herself as a representative of the Nashville community. She tells parents that she should make a commercial for MNPS because she has had, quote, "such a good experience and career with them," end quote. If you want to retain veteran educators, you must acknowledge their experience and the wisdom that comes with it. Long-term educators make connections with families, and that is how we make MNPS a strong, healthy community. It's about the relationships. And when families know us, their children do better in school. Please consider providing longevity pay to retain your veteran teachers. And one more idea, maybe get some more therapeutic dogs like Sergeant Bo.
Thank you. Number four, Kent, also to speak about our educators eligible for tenure. Hi.
That's right. Hello, MNPS school board members. I'm Kent Messner. I reside and teach in District 2. I want to say congratulations to all those teachers who are eligible for tenure. I myself received tenure in 2003. Tenure is something that gives teachers peace of mind. It can also improve retention. However, tenure alone is no longer sufficient, especially when our paychecks seem to never change because of rising insurance costs. As a longtime-tenured teacher, I decided to find a pay stub from the year I gained tenure, the spring of 2003, a long time ago. At the time, I remember being grateful for the job security that being tenured would provide. 20 years later, we are fortunate if someone stays in the profession long enough to even get tenure. I dug this pay stub up because, for a long time, I felt that despite the recent efforts in trying to raise teacher pay, which we much appreciate, by the time that raise actually gets to my pocket, it doesn't feel like much. I decided to compare my most recent pay stub to 2003. Almost every line item had roughly doubled. I now have a master's. Basically, it increased 200% in 20 years. My federal income tax, my social security, my Medicaid, all of that doubled, but two items did not double. My net only increased 178%, and some of that is because I'm now a member of MNEA. I contribute to a 401K. But I also looked at another item on that old stub that was listed as certificated group insurance. The amount deducted was $137 for all insurance, just one line. Fast forward 20 years in that same category, when you include life and disability insurance, which is now listed separately by line, has ballooned to $390. That's a 286% increase in 20 years. Now, I understand things could be worse. We mentioned rideshare driving. That's actually one of my part-time jobs that I do on the side. This summer, I took a construction worker from their job, building a high-rise in the Gulch, to the homeless camp where they lived. I understand it could be worse. We're fortunate, as teachers, to have employer-funded health insurance. But I'd encourage everyone who's an employee to look at Box 12 DD on your W2s. Since the Affordable Care Act passed in 2010, that's where you can find out how much you and your employer paid for your health insurance. For a teacher with a family plan, that amount is more than $1,000 per pay period or over $2,000 a month. In other words, all of us are paying 38% of the gross that I make as a teacher just to cover my health insurance. Since this is a considerable chunk of the amount taxpayers pay for me to do my job of educating students, we must find a way to cap the cost of health insurance. Tenured or not, gross pay increasing 200% while insurance costs raised 286% is not sustainable.
Thank you. Next is number five, Julia, here to also speak about educators eligible for tenure.
I actually have a little handout for y'all. Is that okay?
You can leave it right there. We'll grab it.
Yeah, right here?
Perfect. That works. Thank you.
So my name is Julie Trudell, and I'm an MNPS educator and alum, and I work and live in District 6. I'm here to talk to you about tenure and equitable planning time. Without adequate planning time, tenure is not enough to keep teachers in the profession. And as the previous speaker mentioned, teachers won't make tenure, won't become eligible for it if they're too burnt out to stay. Frankly, that's where we are. We are burnt out because our planning time is still being taken from us in violation of the MOU. This is especially common for TCAT and EOC-tested subjects. We're exhausted, burnt out, and fed up because y'all have not been holding up here into the bargain. We've already agreed to the terms of the MOU. And if you look on your sheet, they are as follows. Planning time at each school shall be equitable with each professional employee receiving the same amount of planning. Three individual self-directed planning periods are 180 minutes per week. If you go down to Section 34, employers shall have no other duties and responsibilities but to plan and prepare for instruction. And must, at the bare minimum, after content planning, after IEP meetings, various meetings, bare minimum, each educator should receive at least 150 minutes of playing time per week, consistent with the Tennessee School Board of Education. Teachers, if they don't follow policy, if they don't go to these meetings that they're asked to go to, we get responded to with disciplinary action. What happens to the administrators and the instructional deans who don't follow our contract? Because we're not going to last in this profession if we don't have time to prepare lessons for our students. We cannot know every student if we don't have the time to contact their families, if we don't have the time and space to be ready to teach them every day. Please uphold the MOU, our contract, which we already agreed to. That, because teacher retention depends on us being respected as professionals so we can give our best to our students and so every student can truly be known. Thank you.
Thank you. Number six, Mary Jo, to talk to us about teachers with tenure.
Hi, my name is Mary Jo Cramm. I'm MNEA Secretary Treasurer and also serve on the PECCA team and PACE Committee. I've been teaching in the district for 13 years, and I'm also the mother of two students at Dan Mills Elementary. I teach at the academy at Old Cockrell, where we recently lost our principal, Dr. Debbie Booker. On behalf of our staff, I'd like to thank Dr. Battle and the team of psychologists and counselors who came to our school to support us and our students the morning we heard about her passing. Seeing Dr. Booker honored tonight means a lot to those of us who worked with her. We miss her. I'm here to talk about the teachers eligible for tenure. I'd like to congratulate all these teachers. This award is well-deserved. I particularly like to recognize my son Kogan's third-grade teachers, Sidney Roberson and Lindsay Roder, and his current fourth-grade teacher, Kelly Van Cleve, who are eligible for tenure this year. These teachers who are earning tenure might be early or mid-career teachers looking ahead and imagining their career in the district 20 years from now. What do they see? How does this district treat its most loyal employees? Unfortunately, our longest-serving teachers are the ones who have not been rewarded by our pay schedule as they deserve. We adjusted our salary schedule a couple of years ago We adjusted our salary schedule a couple of years ago to make up for years of missed step increases, but the ones who benefited the most from the overdue raises were mid-career teachers like me. My longer-serving colleagues were left with minimal raises and understandable resentment over the inequity. Meanwhile, administrators receive longevity pay as an incentive, while teachers do not. 30-year teachers have made a commitment to this district, so we should make a commitment to them that lasts through the final years of their careers. The district must ensure that teachers who've been with this district for three decades or longer continue to receive pay increases that recognize their experience. Cost of living adjustment is not enough, especially when inflation is so high. These are our elders, our mentors, the leaders of our professional learning communities. We must show them the respect they have earned, not just with pins and mugs during Teacher Appreciation Week, but where it really counts, in their paychecks. MNEA is asking Dr. Battle and the board to fund the Compensation Committee's recommendation for longevity pay of $1,250 for every teacher who's reached the top of the salary scale. Hopefully, with an increased commitment to our most experienced teachers, our newly-tenured teachers will see a bright future for themselves in a district that truly values teachers throughout a long career. Thank you.
Thank you. The last, number seven, we have Laura to talk about Neely's Bend.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Laura Leonard, an education specialist at Glencliff High School. I live at 142, excuse me, 142 Brenda Lane, Antioch. I'm here to talk about the configuration of Neely's Bend Middle School. I would like to mention that no matter how you configure a school, it really is not going to matter if you don't have the faculty to staff the school. And the reason why we don't have that right now, and I'm afraid it's going to continue in the future, is because of low pay. For example, we desperately need substitute teachers for teacher absences for various reasons, including teaching vacancies. Right now, due to low pay and lack of respect for substitute teachers, few community members are willing to substitute teach. Raising substitute pay and increasing respect for substitute teachers would go a long way, both to attract them to apply and to retain those already subbing for us. This critical need is born of inadequate compensation of all teachers. In other words, far too people interested in working for this level of pay and respect is at rock bottom. Obviously, this must change. Our students require and deserve better. Our students need teachers who are happy in their jobs. There is no other way for teachers to reach students and increase student outcomes except through general teacher satisfaction at work. And I hate to bring this up, but the truth of the matter is, we have homeless teachers in our ranks. I know of two personally, and I understand that there are others. This is a condition that is unfit for all people everywhere, but especially for teachers because it is so wholly unmerited. How effective or efficient can a homeless teacher be? Or one who commutes two hours to and from work because they don't make enough money to live where they work? How effective do you think teachers are who cannot afford to join their union? This must be rectified immediately by dividing the funds set aside for teachers who were never hired to those of us who did the work this year. This must be further rectified with a raise for next year that exceeds inflation and costs of pay deductions such as insurance. A few years ago, we were asking for 17.5%, and living costs have only risen since then. The 17.5% was never realized, so it seems to me... Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for everyone coming out tonight. That brings us to the consent agenda, and of course, more feedback from my microphone. That brings us to the consent agenda portion of the meeting. We have adopted the agenda as listed. If there's no objection, these items will be adopted. If there are any objections, please let me know so we can pull them. Okay. Seeing no objections, these items are adopted by unanimous consent, and we will move on to number two. Number two is about Neely's Bend middle school grade configuration.
We still need a motion.
I move to accept the consent agenda as listed. We don't have to have it.
I've already...
Okay. Second. All right, being there as a first and a second, do we have any objections?
Call for the question.
Okay. Please raise your hand if you are...
Every parliamentary phrase you know is going to throw up.
Please raise your hand.
I'm so tired of being at the state.
I just said that.
Please raise your hand if you are...
We'll roll this to the hill if not.
There we go. That is the Arvin.
Roll to the hill.
That is...
Say everybody.
That's everybody.
Thank you. Okay. I read Robert Drules and thought I would help that, but...
Oh, you were definitely in order. That was amazing.
I appreciate that. Thank you, honorary parliamentarian. Thank you. That brings us to number two, which is Neely's Bend middle school grade configuration. Before we have a motion on that, I would like to pass it over to Dr. Battle in case there's any additional announcements or conversations we need to have, or any information we need to have with the community meeting that took place.
We do not have any pertinent updates regarding the community meeting. It was held last Thursday, but our team does stand ready to answer any questions if there may be any.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I move to accept the proposed new configuration in for Neely's Bend middle school students.
Second. All right. We have a first and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Well, excuse me, we have to have discussion. My bad. I'm so sorry. That part I messed up.
Can I just say something?
Yes, of course, we have discussion now.
We had pretty good turnout, actually, for the community meeting. How many would y'all say were there, like 45-ish? I'm not going to ask you questions anymore. Forty or 50. Representative from both elementary schools and from Neely's Bend Middle, it was, I felt like there was a really positive feeling among parents. I mean, the questions they were asking were very much in line with some of the questions we had asked. One mom said, "Oh, can I withdraw my optional schools application and just stay at Amquee?" Yes, you can. So, and I have gotten a little feedback from the community as a whole, and it feels like folks are feeling good about this. So, I'm very, I just applaud Dr. Battle and your entire staff for coming up with this very innovative solution to make sure that all of those families are being served in that community. That's all I had to say.
Ms. Max?
I think this is directed to you, Dr. Battle, Ms. Elright, if you don't mind. So, I remember when I was at Neely's Bend, when the school was taken over, there was a lot of angst amongst educators also. What happens to us? What happens to our families? How do we support those students? Let me not assume. Has there been any conversation around educators that are currently at Neely's Bend? If they, if LEED chooses to go a different route, or either not open or still apply to the state, is there a pathway to educators that may want to stay with students, follow them, loop with them, move to Amquee, Madison, or any other MNPS-run school?
Well, based upon the decision of the board tonight, this will dictate our plan moving forward and not necessarily be in conjunction with how LEED and Neely's Bend responds from their perspective. Yes, we've had conversations with our leadership teams about bringing their teams along, and they're empowered to make the most informed decisions to best serve the families that are at their respective schools. And so, when it comes to looping and staffing, our leadership teams will make those informed decisions. But I think the most powerful piece of this is that the principals at the three schools that are involved in this rezoning have all been coming together to align their curriculum, their pathway, conversations about staffing and what may be necessary. They're planning a community engagement event together to help really bring everyone along, making sure that they're informed and preparing for the quality experience for their families. But with regards to specific staff moves, there will not be a reduction of staff at any of these schools. It will require additional staffing when it comes to the grade-level progression, and we just met most recently with our principals about that today. So, they are informed, they are making sure that they're in compliance with all the state laws and district policy and planning, but they are empowered around the selection and retention process, including any special programming like looping if they choose to do so.
Okay. This may be part question or part statement. There is, and this is very broad, general statement, there is often a little bit of confusion amongst educators, teachers, about perception of who they are based on a certain school that they teach in. And I have been under the longstanding impression that Metro Nashville Public Schools wants to take every educator that wants to teach our students. We want to find a place for you to teach our students. And so, if a teacher from one school, one system, one city applies to be a part of the MNPS traditional school, or the traditionally-run MNPS school, they are more than welcome to apply, meet with our principals, our administrators, and consider whatever options they have.
Absolutely. We thoroughly encourage our educators to find a learning community that they can call home and that they can thrive in. And if I could just give kind of one quick announcement, on this Saturday, March 4th, we'll be hosting a hiring fair. Since we're talking about the rezoning plan, Amquee, Neely's Bend, Madison Middle, in addition to all of our other schools, will be present. And so, that's an opportunity for current employees and those who are looking to come into the district to get to know our leaders, our school teams. Most of our teams bring other staff members to talk about their experience, to help with what they can expect working in their learning community. So, this is a time of year, including our transfer process, that will kick off on March 15th. You don't have to wait. You can still go to the hiring fair and be a part of that experience if you're planning or interested in transferring to one of these schools or any school across the district. And so, we do support our educators through that process and encourage them to be where they can thrive, because we want them to thrive so our students can thrive.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any more else?
And a four. Two elementary schools are five. The middle schools are four. The two elementary schools are five.
Dr. McKinnney, do you have anything?
So, yeah, I just wanted to add on the fact of the advantage of, if you're interested and not an employee of MNPS and would like to join us, those are two reward schools, Level 5 schools, that we're looking at. So, they are moving and shaking and doing some top-notch stuff over there. So, I encourage anyone to come to that MNPS Career Fair. Thank you.
Well, since she brought it up, so just to echo, Amquee, Level 5 school, in one year moved from priority to reward school status. Neely's Bend Elementary, multi-year reward school community. And Madison Middle was a Level 4 school last school year. So, we're excited about the leadership, what the educators are doing, all the support staff, and all three of those learning communities. They're on the move, and they're great communities to be a part of, whether you're an educator serving in any capacity or a family looking for a good home, as well as every other school in Metro Nashville Public Schools.
All right. Okay. So, the first and seconded, all in favor, please raise your hand. Did you?
I did.
Okay, thank you. That's unanimous. Thank you so much. All right, thank you, everyone. That brings us to Board Committee reports. We met this afternoon at 4:30 to discuss the Director's evaluation. To discuss that, I'm going to turn that over to Erin.
Thank you. So, just wanted to acknowledge that we spent some time today reviewing semi-annual feedback for Dr. Battle. We worked our way through some self-evaluation reports, some board feedback, and also additional board requests for information. PowerPoint for that will be posted on the MNPS website under the Agenda and Committees section. Getting a head nod from Cameo, so I am right about that. And also, just wanted to mention, there was, in the version we reviewed earlier, there was a mistake on the percentage of students that have been assigned to Navigator. It's actually 94% of students that have been assigned to Navigator, and so that'll be corrected in the updated version and also on the version that we all have on the app. Thank you. And thank you to everyone for the 100% participation that we had in filling out the board, the Director Evaluation.
Yes, thank you. That's huge, y'all. That's huge. It is a first for us. All right. That brings us to our announcements. We go in order of...
Oh, do we only do committee reports on, like, the committees that officially met?
Do you have an advocacy report? You can give an advocacy report because we've had such a heavy session for that.
The Insurance Trust.
Yes, because you had a recent call. I'll allow it.
Thank you. From the advocacy perspective, I just wanted to thank my six board colleagues. There were seven of us present at the legislature this past Wednesday as the K-12 Education Subcommittee met, and we were there. We were not allowed to speak, but we did hear a lot of interesting testimony and continued to advocate for our students at the state level. Also, wanted to mention, just, you know, since the issue of insurance came up during public comment tonight, and we did have an Insurance Trust meeting, I thought it would be appropriate to mention that MNPS has been paying 75% of insurance costs for our employees for many, 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 many years. And I've also, I have, last year, I still am one of the representatives for Insurance Trust. I was able to attend the meetings a lot more last year, so I have witnessed firsthand the very intensive process that goes into finding the best possible bids for that insurance coverage. It's incredibly unfortunate that insurance costs are rising at the rates that they are. But anyway, I just wanted to clarify that and just sort of acknowledge the work that the Insurance Trust does to ensure that all of our MNPS family is cared for. That's, I think that's all I had.
Thank you.
On Insurance Trust, it's me, Erin, Cheryl, me, Cheryl Berthina. Are we the three?
The question was, who is on that committee from the board? It's historically three of us. This year, it is Ms. Masters, Dr. Anna McKinnney, and Ms. Mays. And that changes every year to year, but Ms. Masters has rolled it off from last year to this year. That was one of the first assignments I had when I was on the board, and it is a heavier lift than you would originally think, because there's a lot of thoughtful discussion, but also a lot of thoughtful debate within what's the next best step to do there. And it's also not just made up of board members, it's made up of other stakeholders within MNPS, just to give some context to what is the Insurance Trust.
From there, let's talk about our announcements. We'll start with District number one.
I just want to remind everybody that it's Remee Week, so hopefully you've signed up.
God, there's too many emails.
You've signed up to read at one of the schools. I'm actually going to two on Friday, since that's the only day I have to breathe. So, yeah, reach out to your schools if you haven't. There's still, my understanding is, there's still a lot of open slots and a lot of opportunity to participate in that way. So, it's always a fun time, especially if you can find some little bitty, bitty kids to read to. Don't wear white. That's all I got to say.
District three.
Don't wear white. Also, within my capacity as advocacy chair and governance chair, I'm our representative on class, and we will be having our big meeting next week, our annual winter meeting. And I'm so grateful for that opportunity to work with the other large urban districts. Also, just wanted to mention, what you looking at on my... Oh, it's on the 6th.
At 11:30.
11:30. That's all right. You can look, that's fine. Wanted to mention also that our student board member, Elena, is not here because Hillsborough was in the playoffs, and so she is doing her cheerleading thing, and she wanted me to let y'all know that. I told her we would miss her.
Hillsborough is, I'm Hillsborough over here.
Well, I mean, I'm the liaison for the student board members, so I'm taking my privilege there. Sometimes I just make up things that I am. Also, wanted to mention that we're very much in budgeting season, and so, you know, the conversations about the need for additional staffing, absolutely, you know, ears wide open, eyes wide open around that. But I did also want to point out that, you know, when you're looking at our contracts, our consent agenda, typically when you see S or funding, that is funding that has been, we have been directed in many cases exactly how those funds can be spent. So, we don't have the freedom and flexibility in many cases to just sort of take the big pot of money and, you know, distribute it however we might like. There are a lot, especially with federal funds, and more and more so with state funds, a lot of restrictions and regulations around how we can spend that money. And I absolutely invite everyone who is interested in the Metro Nashville Schools' budget and budget process to continue to be a part of this with us as we move forward with our budgeting. We're going to be discussing the budget more, passing our budget, advocating with... with Metro Council and the mayor to give us our money. So absolutely, please remain engaged in that process with us. That's all I have.
Thank you. District four?
As a follow-up to Ms. Masters, I do want to recognize, follow up with her related to how we spend ESER funds. We were ranked as best for all district in the way in which we did the funds, our distributed funds in, in, across our district. So that's a testament to the great work that we're doing. And so thank you to the team, Dr. Battle and your team, for doing your due diligence in making sure that we are fiducially responsible in the way we allocate funds. Second, I want to congratulate all the teachers who made tenure, especially those, especially those teachers in the McGavick Cluster. Congratulations to you all and, and wishing you the best as we move forward. Over the last few weeks, we have had PAC cluster meetings, parent advisory council meetings across our district. And we're able as of Monday to have a meeting in all 12 clusters across MNPS. While the attendance was not where we wanted, it was great for those parents who were able to come and participate. And it's a testament to the great work that we are beginning to really work and engage families across our district. And so I look forward to, I look forward to the benefits and the work that we do in really building collaborative, collaborative partnership between our district, our schools, and our, our community. Also, this week, I will be, or Monday, I will be attending, actually, I'll be the guest speaker at McGavick's National Honor Society induction ceremony coming up. So really excited for the great work of our students and, and the hard work that they have done to earn that position in National Honor Society. I'm really excited. Yesterday, my son participated in the districts. Is this the second time that they have done soccer?
First.
First time that they have done soccer, bringing element, sports to elementary schools. So was really excited. My son was really excited to participate in that. They had tryouts yesterday and he made the team. So really, really excited about this and the opportunity it gives students across our district. So hope to continue to see the benefit of us really developing well-rounded children, which includes athletics and sports and fitness. I was also this week, it's been, the, the last few weeks have been really busy, but was able to attend the Battle of Books, which was a great competition of students across Metro Nashville Public Schools participating in contests on literacy, which is one of our focused outcomes. It was a great competition. Congratulations to all the students, but again, especially my McGavick Cluster kids. But it was a great event and thank you for the hard work of librarians who worked to put that together across our district. One other thing with advocacy, again, I echo Ms. Masters for families and community members to really stay engaged with what policies are coming down the pipeline. They're coming so fast around education. And it's just important for not only our district, our teachers, our support staff, anybody who's involved in education, our families, to really be, to really be aware of the type of legislation that's coming down and really understand how that impacts Metro Nashville Public Schools and how we have to implement policies that we may not be in favor of moving forward. So, so really be keen to those policies. If you're not aware of what they are, reach out to any board member. I'm sure they will be happy to, to share information with you. And then lastly, thank you, Erin O'Hara Block, for your work and partnership on the evaluation. Thank you to all of our team for our 100% participation and thoughtful feedback in Dr. Battle's evaluation. I really appreciate the collaborative work that we're doing and thank you so much.
Thank you. District five?
Thank you, Chair Elrod. First, I would love to both congratulate and have, issue a call to action to support for one of the Jones Podea family students. One of our third grade students, Alyssa, participated in the Belmont Elementary Poetry Contest. Her teacher, Ms. Doss, and Ms. Doss is a good doggone teacher. She, she failed me when I was trying to teach the, when I was trying to tutor. And I'm gonna say again, that third grade ELA for TCAP is nothing to joke with. So she, she was able to explain it to me and tell me what I did wrong. So shout out to Ms. Doss. But a special shout out to Alyssa and her family for, she wrote the song, I mean, wrote the poem, Blue Sea Song. So please go to Belmont's website, vote for Blue Sea Song in honor of Alyssa. It really is the cutest. I'd also love to thank a generous anonymous donor that we had at Jones who donated $500 for one of our classes to go on a field trip. I'm going to continue to ring the bell, the idea that our top performing schools are not just in affluent districts, they have high parent engagement and support, meaning that they have PTOs, they have support organizations, they get donors. And so many of our schools just don't have the capacity for that. So it is up to us as our, as a community to really wrap our arms around every single school, every single student, every single classroom. So thank you to that donor. I hope you're listening. I really do appreciate that. To turn gears just a bit, I want to remind us that a lot is happening in the legislature. When I say the legislature, I mean January through May. You should be watching what is happening at the Cordell Hole Building. You can visit capital.tn.gov. And on Tuesdays, you have the House Education Committees that meet at 9:00 AM, 3:00 PM, and 4:30 PM. Again, the House meets on Tuesdays, 9:00, 3:00, 4:30 PM. They also meet on Wednesdays at 1:30. Those are different subcommittees, but all around education, whether it be K-12 or higher ed. We also have the Senate that meets on Wednesdays at 3:00 PM. Please get in the habit of just reviewing those, looking at the agendas, understanding if there's anything coming down the pipe that might influence or impact you as a parent, as an educator, someone that is a caregiver for students, or just a concerned community member who wants to make sure your tax dollars in Nashville are not being, I'm gonna say, are not being misappropriated at the state level. So please be watching what's happening. Please be watching what's happening at the legislature. Yeah, I'm sorry. My apologies. Yes, you can watch it online. You can watch it live, even if you can't be there in person. You can also watch the, the video version that's typically uploaded the next day. That's it for me. Go Alyssa. I can't wait to vote for you a third time. Oh, my apologies. I, I missed a whole line. We do have pre-K applications that are open today. We heard at the legislature last Wednesday how important that birth through first grade is. So how important it is. I'm sorry, my apologies. Opens tomorrow. But go ahead and get your pre-K fingers ready because I promise you, some of your favorite schools are already full on day one. Many schools have a three, a third, I mean, a three-year-old pre-K allotment. So please, if you have a, a child that will be either three or four by August 15th, please consider enrolling them in our pre-K. We also have kindergarten applications that I know are already open because I already applied. Jones might be full, but I applied doggone it. So we hope that he's there. And then, of course, Promising Scholars, whether your child is in the third grade or not, please consider joining Promising Scholars. It is a summer program that is offered free of charge for the month of June. Thank you to all educators that are considering using their, their summertime to continue to educate and love on our children. Thank you, parents that are considering and trying to figure out ways to make sure that your child is involved. But again, Promising Scholars application is open. Kindergarten application is open. Pre-K application will be open tomorrow, and I guarantee you it is worth the time and the energy. Thank you.
Thank you. District six?
So thank you so much. Just a few announcements. As Dr. Berthina said, our PAC meetings have kicked off, and I am excited and very proud to say that. We had our PAC meetings in Antioch and in the Canridge Clusters. And it was a low turnout, but we were able to elect board officers at both of those meetings. And so we are excited about moving ahead. And the great thing about it is the board officers are first-time PAC members. So that's super exciting. Our next meetings are going to be in Antioch, will be April 27th. The Canridge Cluster meeting will be April 20th. Locations to be determined. As soon as I receive that information, I will certainly share it with as many people as I possibly can. I want to give a big shout out to Executive Director Davina Jones of Couture Cares. Her and her team brought the Her Prom Closet Event to Nashville for the first time this past weekend. And I got to hang out with Dr. Perry. We got to, we got to share in the experience of some young ladies, well-deserved young ladies, receiving some of the most beautiful prom gowns I've ever seen in my life. A lot of those photos are on my socials, so you can check those out. But again, this was the first time that they were in Nashville. We had almost 200 young ladies participate in this event along with their parents. And shout out to the one dad who showed up with his daughter. So we did the, we did the, what is it called? The challenge? The Cuff It Challenge. And the dad was featured. So yeah, that was super fun. So, and shout out to the following schools who had students there. Canridge High School, McGavick High School, Whites Creek High School, MLK, Hume Fog, Virtual School, Early College, NSA, Overton, Lead Academy, KIP, Republic, Nashville Big Picture, Pro Cone, Hunter's Lane, Hillwood, and two that are not in our district, Station Camp and Columbia Central. So we had students participate from all of those schools. And we're going to try to make this an annual event. It was such a well-planned and well-organized event. And when I tell you these young ladies walked away and they were just so excited about the free dresses that they were able to walk away with. It was a beautiful event. And so again, a big shout out to our Executive Director Davina Jones on a well-planned event. And thank you for hanging out with me, Dr. Perry. This woman is awesome. She had a great time. We had a great time with those young ladies. And thank you also to the parents who joined us on February 15th for our Day on the Hill. We had parents that joined, joined us for that event, had never gone to the legislature before. It was their first time talking to lawmakers. And we did, they did their homework, and I was very impressed. We talked about the third grade retention bill, and I actually think some of the legislators were a little surprised that these parents were so well-planned. Yeah, they were, they did such a great job. And they were scared, but shout out to every single one of them who took the time to go with us. We were there for most of the day. And they went to, a couple of the parents came back to committee meetings this week. So that was, that was great. And I do appreciate that. Also, on this Thursday, I will be participating in Read Me Week at Smith Springs Elementary School with some of the cutest little second graders in the world. I didn't, I wanted to participate with the preschoolers, but the pre-Ks, but I have another appointment, so I couldn't do that. But look out, Smith Springs, here I come. And on March 25th is, just a reminder, the Southeast Easter Egg Hunt. It will be held at the Southeast Community Center in Antioch from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And both the Antioch High School and Canridge High School bands will participate in a pre-hunt parade. So that should be super fun. And finally, we've had a lot of conversation tonight about budgets. I just want to send a reminder that March 30th will be the Community Budget Engagement Meeting. It will be held in Antioch at Canridge Elementary School. The school showcase will begin at 5:00 PM. The budget presentation will begin at 6:00 PM. So if you have any questions about where the money, the $1.1 billion that is allocated to Metro Schools is going, how that money is spent, what it's used for, please come to this meeting, get your questions answered, and you will see that we're not just sitting back here on a big pot of money, money under this desk, just waiting to do with it whatever we want. I would, right. I encourage you to please come to that meeting. Again, it will be March 30th at Canridge Elementary School, starting at 5:00 PM for a school showcase. You will want to be there for the school showcase. This school is amazing. And finally, and I can't believe she didn't mention this, but congratulations to our very own Christian Bugs, who received the NAACP Image Award for Education and Excellence this past weekend from the National Chapter of NAACP. Thank you. Congratulations, Ms. Bugs.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. District seven?
Thank you to the parents who came out to the PAC meeting last week. We appreciate your presentation. And for Ms. Bugs, even though she's excellent in education, we're going to give her a seminar on the different types of management procedure for the state's legislature, metro government, and metro schools.
What a hard time we've given her. District eight?
I also want to say thanks to all the folks in the Hillsborough Cluster who came out to the PAC meeting. We had a great participation and great conversations. Appreciate it. I want to, I, well, remind, I think, families and parents that they can go to the MNPS website for more information about the third grade retention law and also how MNPS is working to prepare and implement. The website is really good, y'all. There's a lot of good information there. There's a short video that explains sort of what's happening. And so compliments to the MNPS staff for putting that together. It's been extraordinarily helpful, and I've sent it to a number of families. Congrats to the Hillsborough Girls and Boys Basketball Teams who are advancing in the regional tournament, as previously mentioned by Ms. Masters. Also, this weekend at Hillsborough, the Hillsborough Players will be performing All Shook Up, which is an Elvis-related musical adventure. So if folks have time, Hillsborough has lots going on this weekend, lots of fun opportunities for your whole family. And then also congratulations to JT Moore Girls Basketball, who made it, I think, into third place in the city basketball tournament, and the West End Middle School Boys Team, who were the runner-up in the city boys tournament. And then, you know, also East, who, you know, makes all the big things happen and got that state championship and whatever. But good job.
District nine?
Yes, I also want to say Happy Read Across America Week. It's my, one of my favorite weeks of the year. I love to read. I will be reading to Wesme tomorrow morning to the school. And I'll also be at Harpeth Valley later this week. Also wanted to let everybody know that Nashville Big Picture High School is hosting a celebration of their resilient community called Resilience All Around Us. It will be the celebration through performances, stories, and shared experiences. It will be on March 2nd at Big Picture High School from 5:30 to 7:00. It seems to be, I think it's going to be a really great night. And we could all use a lot more resiliency these days. So if you're able to come out to that, I'm sure they'd appreciate that. I want to say congratulations to Ethan Martin of Hillwood, who is the 2023 TSSAA Wrestling State Runner-Up. I'm really, really proud of you. And also, our Hillwood Boys Basketball Team are the District 10 AAA Champions and are now in the semifinals for the regional tournament tonight at 7:45 at Liberty Creek High School. And if they win, they'll move on to the regional finals on March 2nd. So we're rooting for them, really excited about how well our basketball team has done this year. I also want to say congratulations to all of our teachers who have earned tenure tonight. Thank you for your hard work and for your dedication. It is not an easy thing, especially these days, and we really, really appreciate you and, and are very proud of those of you who have earned tenure. And another plug for pre-K application opening tomorrow, and for people who want to visit the MNPS website to look at more information about the third grade retention law. It's extremely important. We could use your advocacy. There's a lot of ins and outs of it, things that we don't really know exactly how it's going to work at this point. The policy has not quite been hammered out all the way. And so it is something that we are, as a board and individually, keeping an eye on. And so as long as we are all plugged in and, and working together and reaching out to our lawmakers to let them know how we feel about it, then we're doing everything we can do. So we appreciate your involvement and ask for you to continue to stay plugged in and continue to reach out and advocate for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Senior Board Member, Mr. Abanese Hale, do you have anything for us?
Thank you. First of all, I just wanted to congratulate Spencer again for his two medals. I think he made all of us at MLK very proud. I also want to congratulate the MLK Middle Schools Boys Basketball Team for winning the Western Division Championship. It's very nice seeing them come back to the school with the trophy. And then outside of that, I just want to wish all juniors luck. I think next week is their official ACT that they're going to be taking at school. And I just want to reiterate that your score doesn't really define who you are, but what's important is that you go there and try your best. Thank you.
So good. All right. Thank y'all. As we end Black History Month, I want to be sure that it's heard from our board that we honored the bravery, resilience, courage, and history of Black Americans. I appreciate MNPS's communications of just focusing on a lot of our employees throughout the month.
the month, and I am very honored to work with so many Black women on this board, and it's an exceptional honor, and I really appreciate the opportunity. As a minority-majority district, it's especially imperative that we are proactive and strategic in supporting our students and staff. And as mentioned earlier in our evaluation committee, I want our board and MNPS to commit to our diversity and equity measurements within that roadmap. This is especially true as the state has now limited our ability to hold implicit bias training, as you may or may not be aware, even though significant research says that these biases contribute to ongoing racial disparities among students' achievement, opportunities, and discipline. So it may require more of us to figure out how to implement these changes, but it is our duty and service to do so. So I look forward to us working on that together. Coming up on our calendar, the board meeting on March 14th is canceled due to spring break. So I will not see y'all, I mean, I might see y'all again, probably at the legislature, as we have talked about many times. But I will not see you here on the board floor until March 28th, and I want to make sure the public is aware of that, that the meeting on March 14th has been canceled due to spring break. Also, if you are the planning type, the meeting on May 23rd has also been canceled due to our graduations. I think we have two or three that evening. So because of the amount of people that we will need to have from our board at those graduations, that too has been canceled. So I want to make sure y'all are all aware. And I will schedule the July Directors Evaluation Committee meeting, which is some follow-up from our committee afternoon meeting. Coming up in District 2 schools, I have the Overton Bobcat Players presented Alice in Wonderland. This, this feedback, y'all, this weekend, and it was really good. The Bobcat Players, y'all, are just so great. I know everybody has like their favorite things, they're so much good at Overton, it's hard to pick which one, and I'm not saying the Bobcats are it, but it's close. Y'all are real good. So I love that. The Gecko Tones, which is at Granberry, is having their concert on March 6th. And we also have an Oliver Middle School tour for rising fifth graders on March 7th. I appreciate everyone that's participating in Read Across America Week. Again, if you would like to contact your schools to see what kind of space they have for you, you are welcome to do so, and of course, I encourage our MNPS staff and council members and all others, if they would like to be involved, it's an easy way to do so. If you do work, as Dr. Gentry mentioned, in one of our younger grades, you may get a snail trail with some of our younger ages, but it is so incredible to hang out with them. They just love to read alouds, and they really, really respect that we're there, and it's just, it's a wonderful experience, I really suggest it. Anytime inside of a classroom is a good time. The snail trail, it's a snail trail, y'all. As somebody that taught first grade, I know for a fact. Our third grade retention site is helpful, I've mentioned, and I encourage our families to check it, but not just once or twice. That information's gonna continue to be updated, because that information continues to be updated for us, as hopefully that bill is amended and as TDOE operationalizes the many, many pieces of that. So that information is exceptionally helpful now, absolutely look at it, but don't just look at it once, that will need to be updated, and we will do that for you. On the note of advocacy while we were here, just want to make sure colleagues are aware that HB 1214 was passed while we were in our meeting with a voice vote in the K-12 Subcommittee. It allows a permissive increase in local expenditures to occur, however, due to a bunch of variables, the precise fiscal impact of boarding is currently undetermined.
What's the bill, what's the boarding bill?
It's the charter boarding.
Oh, the homeschool?
The homeschool charter.
Charter boarding.
Yeah, HB 1214.
We could have a better context for the public.
Okay. HB 1214 is a amendment that was filed this weekend, or Friday, excuse me. It allows the state to have homeschool charter schools in essence, where the charter school teaches three days a week, and the homeschool, which they call a parent teacher, teaches two days a week, and that can be remotely. They receive 100% of our fiscal money, dollars, even though that charter school is only teaching 60% of the time. And it also allows them to have boarding school opportunities as well, so you can also do housing. That housing is having a really difficult time being quantitated, figuring out how much that would cost, and so that's what I mean when I say that they haven't figured that out in the fiscal note, but it'll be an ongoing conversation, I'm sure, as it goes to the Senate. It has a lot of leadership, positivity within the state of Tennessee, and so we are, of course, working on it and talking about it, as it will absolutely affect our fiscal responsibility to our current students. But there's also, of course, additional concerns of, is that meeting the standards that we have set as a state? And is that accountability? And is that the best measure of how we treat our students and our families? As parent teachers, though wonderful, are not our teachers, they aren't set to the same type of standard, and so we have so many additional conversations to be had, but we have been discussing that as a concern, and it just came up, and it was done during our board meeting, so it did pass in that K-12 Subcommittee. Pre-K enrollment opens tomorrow, we will have some schools that fill up quickly. It is a priority for our board, it's always a conversation with constituents this time of year, so I want to go ahead and make sure we say it here, but I know we'll need to say it again, and we should, is that family opportunities or pre-K early childhood opportunities for our families are important for us as a board. I would even say it's a priority for us on the board, not just for the Nashville community, but for our staff. But we are limited in what we're able to offer. The state has not provided new pre-K funds since 2005, so those are all local dollars that we provide those with, or individual grants, and we do our absolute best with that, and it is, continues to be a priority. But please make sure that you are quick with your enrollment, particularly in some areas. And then, I guess, on the note of Debbie Booker, and her recognition with her saying, "I love you and there's nothing you can do about it," I say the same, and go have a good rest of your week. Let's be there, no further business. This meeting is adjourned.
Hey, can everyone stay for a second?